Good evening. I'd like to call the May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As is tradition, the superintendent of schools is conducting the, I'm conducting the initial business of reorganization. So I will ask for nominations for a chairperson for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Do I have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Jen Giotzitz.
Okay. Do I have anybody's second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All right. Nomination by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mrs. Zirek, and I have to ask for a roll call, so.
Yes.
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 Do I vote too? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And so now I'm going to relinquish my proverbial gavel. Who will entertain nominations for our vice chair.
Excellent. Anybody would like to make a motion for vice chair?
I, through my chairman, nominate Adrian Rogers for vice chair.
Second.
Excellent. We have the nomination of Adrian Rogers. Roll call on this one, too? Is that?
No.
No, okay. Okay, all in favor? Okay, five, zero, zero. Nope, four, right?
Five.
One, two, three, four.
Oh, yeah, five, okay. I can count. Excellent. Next order of business is, we're going to do the recognition before?
Yes.
Okay, recognition?
Yes, so as part of this recognition, we have Kayla Jackson. She's presenting her project Backpack Awareness. And Kayla is taking on this project because she's in the process of working towards her Gold Award, which, if you don't know, is the highest Girl Scout Award given. So I'm going to let Kayla take it away.
Hi, everyone. As you already know, my name is Kayla Jackson. I'm currently a junior at WPA, at Wapo High School. And I'm presenting Backpack Awareness, which is my Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor a Girl Scout can achieve. It is also an eighty-hour community service project, and I've chosen to focus on helping the Wapo Public Schools in teaching more about how to practice backpack safety, sorry, how to practice backpack safety for especially grades K through twelve. As you may know, I'm sure a few of you have children who are in the Wapo Public Schools or elsewhere, backpacks are an essential part to every single, you know, school, every single school, every single student. It's a crucial tool for all students. However, it is very common for it to be used improperly. So that's kind of what this project's a little bit about. So as you know, I'm a Girl Scout. If you look at the picture in the right-hand corner, that is a picture of me at Wapo Day this year, and I was passing out flyers, and I thought that would just be a fun image to include. So although an essential tool for all ages, backpacks can, if they are worn improperly, be attributed to spinal development issues, injury, lasting back, neck, shoulder pain, and also can help develop issues with breathing. And oftentimes, students don't know how to properly wear their backpack. They're slinging it over one shoulder instead of wearing it with both straps. They're letting it lay really far down their back, and it puts all this stress into their lower back rather than on top of their shoulders where it should be. And generally, I just don't think we have enough education on how to properly wear a backpack, or pack it for that matter. In addition to wearing it improperly, a lot of students overpack their backpacks. I mean, if you've seen backpacks at the high school, I'm sure you know that a lot of students carry really, really heavy backpacks. Even middle school, you know, it goes, trickles down from there as well. So by spreading backpack awareness and educating on proper backpack usage, we as a community can prevent the prevalence of negative side effects to backpack usage. And for me, what I have noticed as, you know, a high schooler who's gone through the Wapo Public Schools using a backpack, it does cause a lot of spinal pain. It does cause a lot of negative effects. And I think if we as a community can create guidelines and even just push this awareness, it can definitely be helpful for students of all ages, even beyond high school. So working alongside occupational therapy professors at Boston University, I have developed a few statistics, research, and guidelines for suggestions for proper usage. At the high school, we conducted a survey, which was a sample-sized survey of about twenty-seven to thirty students of all grade levels, and we found that backpacks at a maximum were weighing about thirty pounds, which is a very heavy backpack, if you are unaware. That is about twenty-one, twenty-two percent of a student's body weight for the average high school student. And on a typical, sorry, on a typical scale, it should be only about ten percent of the student's body weight. So I did complete a little research with the American Occupational Therapy Association and found that this percentage should be about ten percent. However, most students are carrying, on average, fourteen point one percent of their body percentage, which is well above that ten percent average or guideline. In addition to seeing this range of backpacks being between about ten and thirty pounds, we found that at the high school, students are not using their lockers, which, if you've ever been in the high school, you probably can tell they carry their backpacks everywhere with them. And while this isn't consistent through all of the Wapo Public Schools, especially not the middle school, I know they're better about using their lockers, it definitely is an interesting statistic to see that zero students out of all of the participants in the survey said that they use their backpack and put it in their locker for locker, and use their locker every single day. While there is a little bit of locker usage for sports bags and other materials here and there, it's really interesting that we're not using those lockers because they are a very good tool, especially for backpack usage, considering that if you're carrying your backpack, that's thirty pounds every single day for forty-five minutes per day with passing periods and walking into school, all of that, it definitely adds up and further makes your back pain worse and all of that. So far, I'm very proud of what I have been able to start at the high school. I've created some posters. I've spread backpack awareness on the morning news a few times here and there, and have also developed an educational Instagram account that shares tips and guidelines about backpack awareness. I also completed the survey at the high school, which was very interesting. Additionally, over the past few weeks, I've been able to visit a few of the elementary schools' pack meetings and also the middle schools' pack meetings to talk to some of the parents about this because I also think it can be taken into individual homes because parents are teaching their kids and trying to get them to wear their backpack properly and trying to educate them on how to pack their backpack properly. That also can be a very helpful way to spread this awareness. So ways we as a school district can improve is by teaching how to pack it light and wear it right. So this is our overall initiative, pack it light and wear it right. And it's basically stating that you only pack what you need for the day. So your backpack should only weigh about ten percent of your body weight because you're only packing those essential tools. And if you're not only packing those essential tools, you're carrying those other stuff at other days and leaving them in your locker instead. Also, wearing it properly, wearing both straps, tightening the straps so that they're not hanging off your shoulder, shortening the straps so that they aren't all the way down. And then adjusting the backpack height to make sure that all the pressure is on your shoulders rather than your lower back. Additionally, preventing injuries by not having backpacks in the hallways, not having backpacks in classrooms, that could become tripping hazards or just, you know, causing a little bit more traffic could definitely also be a benefit of this goal. So a few of the ways that I would love to initiate this initiative throughout the Wapo Public Schools is by creating backpack demonstrations, either video presentations or in-person presentations, where we can teach kids how to properly adjust their backpack, teach teachers how to properly encourage kids to wear their backpack, and also teach them how to clean out their backpacks so they have that organizational skill that they can take the responsibility for. So initiating additionally a backpack cleanup time, potentially once per term or every few months, could definitely be helpful in putting the responsibility on students to clean out their own backpacks because I do think it's an important executive functioning skill to be able to take that responsibility, clean out your bag, understand what you need versus don't need for school because I know personally, at least, I'm carrying a lot of things that I do not always need. And being able to take that initiative and have that time given to me to take that responsibility for cleaning out my backpack and understanding what I need to clean out versus what I don't need to clean out can definitely be helpful, even for older students and especially younger students. I was at the elementary school yesterday, at the pack meeting yesterday, and I know a lot of, a lot of parents were like, oh, I carry, my kid carries a stuffed animal, a rock collection in my backpack. All of these things, which obviously you don't need, but being able to give that backpack cleanup time or even just having a teacher recommend it can definitely be helpful for a lot of those younger ones to recognize that maybe they don't need to bring their rock collection into school that day. I also would love to encourage staff to work alongside students and parents in developing a class materials list because I will say, a lot of the times, teachers will recommend to bring a lot of binders, a lot of books, a lot of, a lot of these things. And obviously, they're essential tools, and we need those to learn. But also trying to minimize that list to only the essentials rather than making there a lot of crossovers potentially between subjects. I know, like, some, some subject teachers will say, oh, you need this binder, but have it separate from a different binder. But maybe if we can try to consolidate those materials into a singular list amongst the entire, all of the subject teachers, could definitely be a better way to minimize how much we're packing in our students' backpacks. So further enhance, this would also help further enhance organizational skills by allowing students to understand what they're packing versus what, you know, maybe isn't an essential tool to buy. I also would love to, and see more locker usage, especially at the high school. I know that since COVID, a lot of schools across the country, we've even completed some research on this, have not been using lockers, especially since COVID. I think it's just a national trend, you know, we didn't want as many students in the wings and, you know, spreading germs and all of that. But now I think we're at a good enough point where we can consider definitely encouraging this locker usage. And I mean, there are definitely some things to consider with this. There are a lot of different places in the high school, and, you know, if you have your locker in the history wing, it might not be as convenient for somebody as maybe the math wing. And that's definitely something to consider, but somehow increasing this usage in some way, you know, that's definitely helpful. If you go back to our statistics, there was a question, I could go back. In our locker usage question, we asked if students even knew where their locker was. And there were a few respondents that said, no, I've never been to my locker before. I don't know where my locker is. So just understanding that is very interesting because why don't students know where their locker is? You know, obviously, we don't do it every year. We don't check in, especially, you know, after freshman year. We kind of, I think, lockers are like, okay, this is your locker. That's it. I think definitely encouraging that by maybe showing students their lockers each year or explicitly telling them where their locker might be could definitely be a good strategy for ensuring more locker usage. I think this concludes my overall presentation, but I would love to hear all of your suggestions, all of your feedback. I would love to start initiating this project throughout the fall. I think it definitely could be for the betterment for overall student wellness for all grades, and I would love to hear your perspectives on it.
That was fascinating. Good job. You were so well spoken. So that's fantastic. And I love how you're going even down to the elementary school and encouraging them to develop healthy habits right from there because I can tell you I've seen some pretty horrific things in backpacks in my time. And, yeah, I'm constantly trying to clean things out, but perhaps it would be better received from someone like yourself, let's say. So I think this is just a fantastic initiative and
Thank you.
good job with this. Yep.
I will, I have two things. One, my son was one of those people, he was at high school, he had no idea where his locker was.
Yeah.
And so carried his whole life on his shoulders. And as somebody who has gone to PT twice for my shoulders, based on lots of damage I did in high school and college, I think this is an amazing initiative. And as a marketing person, I think you've got the right ideas, right? The Instagram account, the pack meetings, you know, materials that you can hand out and other instructional material.
Speaking of materials to hand out, I do have some extra flyers if you would like to have some of those.
And if you would like to follow our Instagram account, we have a QR code. And also, it should be written on this side over here.
I know a lot of us
No, great job.
so I think it would be good, we'll, we'll post it on our social media accounts.
Thank you.
Get it out to people, too.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And you have a QR code there as well, I see.
Yes.
That's very high-tech. Adrian?
So we were actually just talking about this before this meeting. So because I was just commenting on how giant my daughter's backpack is and that she wears it, and there's tons of stuff in there she doesn't need, so this is a real, like, this is, this timing is awesome because I'm going to go home and tear apart her backpack, and we're going to go through it together of what we actually need, what we don't. But, yeah, thank you for doing this, and
Of course.
we'll definitely be spreading the word.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bill?
Through you. I'm sure, first, congratulations on getting to Gold Award. I know, like, there's a lot of folks who start off as brownies, and it winnows quite
Yes, definitely.
a lot, so it's great.
There's only three people in our troop at the moment, but all of them are looking forward to receiving their Gold Award, hopefully. But, yeah, thank you so much.
I, I know Dr. Goff and I can both probably remember back in the days before Chromebooks when everyone had massive textbooks, the joy of getting it in the chest with a forty-pound backpack at the top of the, you know, the third floor, history wing, because I think it happened to all of us at least once or twice in our Wapo High School careers. So I think it's, it's great that you're doing this, but more importantly, it's great that you're learning these sort of skills, right?
Yes.
The skills of addressing a problem in your community, seeking solutions as opposed to just complaining about it, petitioning people who have, you know, some sort of authority in policymaking, and, yeah, your, your speech was fantastic. You know, I think you'll go far with the ability to kind of advocate the research you did as well. I think these are all great skills, which is part of what the Gold Award is. And I know you, you join a number of Wapo young women before you who've, who've done projects like this. I see somebody behind you is probably also quite proud of you as we are in the community. So thank you for coming. And like, like we said, we'll, we'll get this out there, but it's, it's, it's good to sometimes tackle perennial problems and try to, try to make incremental change that's positive. And perhaps we can do a little better about reminding people where their lockers. As a start, but, but very good. And thank you for coming before us. I really appreciate it.
I agree. The research was really impressive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I would just add, this is very, very well done. And I'm thinking that maybe the, you know how they do like a sneak peek for the kids going into sixth grade?
Yes.
And they do something similar at the high school.
Right.
That's when kids are coming in and they're like, I'm going to get it all together this year.
Yeah.
Like, I'm going to do it right. So, you know, it might, that might be a great opportunity for you to find the right way. Like, you would know better than I would about whether it's social media or actual physical presence at, at some of those things. But I think that you're on to something. And like, old school problem was, every teacher said you have to bring your textbook.
Right.
And we've kind of moved away from that. So I don't know whether you could, like, add some humor to it. Like, you know, this is not your mama's backpack. This is yours, and it doesn't need to weigh thirty pounds.
It's right.
You know, something like that. But you're, you're on to something good.
Thank you.
And as Bill said, it's impressive to see what you're doing. So thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much.
And, yeah, good luck with it.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate you all listening to my project and just having me. Thank you. Yeah.
Very good.
Spread the word, and nice to see you, Jen.
Have a nice rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, she'll take mine.
I don't have any. Do you have a single-sided one and then another single-sided one?
I can give you mine.
They're just double-sided. Thank you so much.
Excellent. This is going in my refrigerator.
Uh, next up on the agenda, we have the student report. Nice to see you, James.
Nice to see you, too. So, good evening, everyone. I'm James P. Dazino, and I'm a junior at Wapo High School. We now have eleven days of school left, and everyone's eager for summer. The seniors' last day was, last day of school was May twenty-first. The senior dinner was held last night in the high school cafeteria after dinner. And, I'm sorry, high school cafeteria after dinner, seniors just see their yearbooks, yearbooks. Graduation's on Sunday, June first. Many Wapo High School students have their artwork displayed at the Wapo Public Library for the district art show. All artwork, all artwork will be displayed until the end event. The yearbook committee is working on putting together the spring supplement, which will feature all the spring events. Please help out by sharing any pictures you have of spring sports, prom, concerts, graduation, graduation, or any other activities. Wapo High School's school counseling department has been bringing students on field trips to attend information sessions and some local college tours. Today, they had, they had a field trip to Bridgewater State University for a college fair with over a hundred, a hundred participating colleges and universities. The Wapo PAC held a staff appreciation lunch on May sixteenth with food catered by Vincenzo's Italian Deli. Wapo High School held their annual pops night on Friday, May twenty-third. This year's event was a fundraiser to benefit the Michael Falker Scholarship Fund. Michael Falker was a longtime music teacher at Wapo and was known for his belief that all students should have access to quality music, to a quality music experience. This yearbook's liter, or this year's literary magazine, The Hilltop, is now available for reading. This is a small collection of stories and poems which were written by Wapo High School students. Summer program brochures are now available. Courses offered include Common App Bootcamp. Students eligible for school, for summer school due to failing grades will be contacted by the school counseling office at the school end on June thirteenth. Summer reading signups are also now available and should be completed by Friday, June sixth. Enrollment for the Rwanda Service Learn Trip is now, now open. Space is limited and sponsor available on a first-come, first-served basis. An email invitation was sent out requesting participation in the Wapo Public Schools' district-wide family school climate survey. Insights collected will aid in guiding school councils as they develop school improvement plans for the next school year. Wapo High School was granted designation for a second innovation career pathway in manufacturing, with the first being information. Students interested in pursuing careers in the manufacturing or information fields are encouraged to apply to be a part of the program. For rising juniors and seniors who plan to take the SAT during the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, all registration dates are now open on College Board's website. Clubs are now winding down for the school year, with the final club meetings happening this month in June. The regular season of spring sports is now over. Playoff brackets have been recently released on the MIA's website. The boys and girls track team will be traveling to Westfield State tomorrow and Sunday for the Division III state championship. Wapo's spring sports, all, Wapo's spring sports teams have finished their regular seasons with impressive records, and we now are looking forward to supporting the playoff runs. And I forgot to write in the report, but the Wapo High School National Honor Society also had their, like, induction and graduation for the members of the seniors, like, I think, last Tuesday. And that's everything. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or anything? Excellent. Well, I'm sure you have finals to study for, so we really appreciate your time. Next order of business, new business, the bullying data reporting update.
Awesome. Thank you. So at the conclusion of each year, I present on bullying prevention intervention plan and data. And I just remind folks that this comes from and data, and I just remind folks that this comes from a group of concerned citizens, many concerned citizens, around 2017, 18, who created a Safe and Supportive Schools Initiative to find ways to improve Wapo's response to bullying and harassment, and one of the commitments we made was to be transparent with our data. So, since that meeting at the end of each year, I have presented at school committee around our data, and also use this opportunity to present on what bullying and, and how we define bullying in Wapo Public Schools, and what we do to prevent it. So, to start, this is the legal definition of bullying. At the school level, we really look at three things as we determine if something is considered bullying. One is, it needs to be repeated, and that's really important, not that one time someone being hurtful or saying something mean is insignificant, as we would take that very seriously, but we know that when that behavior is not corrected, especially by young students, that we have concerns for what could be defined as bullying. In addition, we look at any forms of harassment, as I oftentimes define using those five things listed in the law. And then finally, our administration team will look at balance and differences. That could be a number of thing, a number of students against one student, students who, you know, might be more socially accepted, or most, more socially welcomed, those are the, the power, the power difference is something that our administration team will look to determine if there's a real concern for bullying for our students. We, each year, review our Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan. This plan was developed, I did not develop alone, it's developed by teachers, school staff, professional, support personnel, school volunteers, administrators, community representatives, everyone who was actually part of that Safe and Supportive Schools. We also get a lot of guidance from the state of things that are important, and that we make sure that we include in our Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan. It is reviewed each year by a number of different councils and committees. It is available on our website, and also, it's important note that it's, it's also reviewed and approved by the Department of Education, by DESI, through the tiered focus monitoring that occurs actually every year, but in three-year cycles. And the last note, I just want to mention that this year, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office provided additional resources that we also included on our website, and those resources are translated into many different languages, and they are, they are there to primarily, the Attorney General, to address hate and bias in schools, and ways to combat that. Now, I want to look a little bit more specific into the data. This year, we had fifty-three reports or allegations of bullying. So, one of the things that the Safe and Supportive Schools Initiative that was formed many years ago noticed was that the Massachusetts state law required that schools keep a record of any allegations of bullying, and then, through the investigation, also keep a record of any confirmed or documented cases of bullying. Wapo, like many schools, struggled keeping the allegations in the paperwork and the necessary forms to track that data, but we actually, after that 2007-18 year, started to very closely track that data and keep a record of it. Even though the state, even though it was written in the law, the state did not collect that data, and it wasn't only until last year was the first year that they collected all allegations of bullying, and we were in a phenomenal place, because we had records far beyond last year, and were prepared and had all of the instruments in place to keep these records accurately. So, what you see here are the records of the number of allegations we had. We had four documented cases of bullying that came out of those fifty-three reports and allegations. One of the things that I mentioned briefly earlier that I want to stress again is that if, if it's not bullying, it doesn't mean we then ignore it. We take any reports or allegations of bullying harassment very seriously, and it's a really important part of our safety plan to make sure that we respond to those things appropriately. So, all allegations, all fifty-three of those allegations resulted in contact to a parent or guardian. I would say most, I was above ninety-four percent when I ran through the data, most allegations resulted in a school safety plan, even though, again, they may not have resulted in confirmed bullying. When appropriate, depending on the severity of the allegation, we would collaborate with our school resource officer, and we also track as part of our reporting that we keep internally locations, so that we can see any trends, to be paying attention to spaces or areas that we need to pay closer attention to, to limit not just bullying, but any concerns of harassment or any allegations. A question that I get often, that I haven't included in my presentation in the past, but I wanted to include this year, is parents and students might ask, "Well, what is a school safety plan? What does that look like?" And again, just to stress, a school safety plan can be put in place for any concern, concerning situation of conflict, of disagreement among students, or in the rare cases of confirmed bullying. A school safety plan can include classroom or team-based check-ins, and that basically means that we provide and ensure follow-up with school councils and administrators, and we certainly pay attention to all students of all, but there's a particular interest for the target, to make sure that they feel safe, that there's a place and an adult that they can go to, to report any additional incidents, or, or to support them in any area of need. We oftentimes include in our safety plan, safety and separation measures. I've lifted, I've listed a few there, but they're what you'd imagine. If, if two students in conflict share a classroom, we might address seating or grouping arrangements, we might consider transition or passing times, or certainly rearrange seats on transportation or a bus. We also look to, to consider restorative approaches. We know that, that our students, you know, make mistakes, and conflict is common in schools, and so oftentimes, we work with our students, when appropriate, to ensure that they have opportunities to mediate conflict, to come to resolutions, or even maybe to agree to some behavioral contracts until relationships are restored. And then finally, we will certainly work with our staff and our teachers to observe and monitor any student behavior, and have follow-up with our teams or grade-level teachers to ensure that their behave, that the relationships among students are appropriate. And finally, what I wanted to provide for you is a six-year comparison. I actually considered, last year I did a five-year, and I considered doing a six-year again, but what I thought was interesting about this is you see that 2018, 2019 was, what I would suggest was our, really our last full traditional year before COVID, and, and you might look at this and say, "Oh, do we have a, you know, a trend or a growing concern? Should we be, should we be, you know, worried that our allegations are at fifty-three, and our cases of bullying are at four?" And a couple of things, the couple of ways that we look at this, A, of course, we're always looking at growing trends. Do we need to consider other methods? Do we need to consider other professional development for our staff? But another way that we look at it is sometimes awareness around the things we have in place could actually increase allegations. So, we have found that when we do offer programming to students around bullying or around healthy relationships, that in those cases, sometimes allegations go up, because students, and, and not in a bad way, use those opportunities to find a trusted adult to share maybe some relationships that they have, that they have concerns about, or maybe to share an online incident or something that occurred among peers. And so sometimes allegations isn't a bad thing, it allows adults to become involved, to support students before things get more serious. And finally, I try to include how we do respond to the data that we have and the information in our tracking system. One thing is we remain committed to social, emotional learning practices and professional development that supports Safe and Supportive Schools. I've listed a few things here, we've worked closely with the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center, oftentimes referred to as MARK, and we have trained our staff to become actually staff trainers for each individual building, and also, MARK provides awesome PD and support to students as well. We utilize other third-party resources, including Common Sense Education, which is a great resource for digital literacy and support for students on how to navigate a lot of the online platforms. And another group that we started working with this year, specifically at the Boyd and School, was Boston vs. Bully. So, we try to partner with outside and third-party organizations as well, as we know that those can sometimes be a great voice for our students. And as I mentioned earlier, we're also training several of our administrators and some of our counseling staff in restorative justice circles to support our students, to restore relationships, and to ensure that our students have healthy relationships with one another. We continue to maintain and update the Wapo Public School Bullying Prevention Investigation Plan. We have to update it every two years. I typically make it part of my yearly summer routine as well. We will continue to be transparent and ensure that our plan and our reporting methods are communicated to all staff, students, families, and of course, the folks here at school committee. We will, in our schedule, to ensure yearly refreshing training at the start of the year for all staff, and we also do an additional MARK training at our new staff orientation as an additional step. And as I noted earlier, we'll continue to maintain our transparent reporting practices and procedures, so that Wapo, so the Wapo community can know that we are committed to a safe and supportive school for all staff and students. So, with that said, are there any questions or comments?
Nancy? Excellent presentation, you know, from last, I think, it's even, I, I love seeing the long-term, you know, data, and the, the five, six-year differences, but just thank you, and there's a lot of work to put in, and it was very clear.
Thanks.
Nancy?
Yeah, I would just say that I think this is a super important topic, but it's also probably one of the most misunderstood topics, because it feels to me like we talk here about what technically is bullying, and then, in the community, the words are used differently. And I think part of it is just that it's hard to be a kid, and it's hard to interact with other kids, and a lot of, a lot of things that, when, when people throw around the word bullying casually, it's part of almost normal developmental things that kids have to, have to go through, like, sometimes they, somebody says the wrong words, and you get your feelings hurt, and I guess my comment is just that if parents or kids feel like they're, they're really struggling, it's not a bad idea to reach out to the classroom teacher, or to reach out to somebody at school to ask for some help before something small turns into something bigger, because we shouldn't be afraid of conversations like, you know, "My, my kid feels like there's no friends." You know, I think that, that schools have done really good jobs at helping kids through those situations, and sometimes, sometimes I think it's not a bad idea to offer to parents and to kids, that we have plenty of staff that are willing to help them work through some of the difficult things that, that kids go through, because it's tough to be a kid, and, you know, separating out social media and all sorts of things that make it even harder than it was ten years ago, I think that, that this just reminds me of all the good work that the school system has done, and all the resources that we have, so we should just remind families to reach out if their kids are struggling.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, a proactive approach is a great approach, right? We, we, we much prefer the phone call, "I think my son or my daughter is struggling with some healthy relationships or some potential conflict," before it raises to the issue where we're elevated to, you know, anger and frustration around, you know, bullying. And I, I think that's really, I echo that and agree with you, Nancy, that, you know, we, the schools want to partner with families and parents, and, and our counselors do an awesome job, and our administration team does an awesome job of, you know, supporting students when, you know, they're trying to navigate some of the social dynamics that are difficult, no matter what, right? In some ways, it's just what it means growing up and being in schools, but especially difficult, I think, in our more, on our social, on our more of the online social platforms that exist. I, I, I'm so sorry, I had a note to mention, and I didn't, I just wanted to make sure, as an example of when I say how we monitor data, one thing that I just wanted to share that I didn't include in the slides, was that one of the things that we, that Principal Rogeri and I talked a lot about this year was making sure that the middle school, because it was larger, were, you know, were we gonna have increased incidents of conflict or bullying? You know, could that be a building that could be tough to maintain, those, those close dynamics and relationships? And actually, last year, Burden Johnson combined had thirty-three allegations, and this year, the middle school had thirty, and I don't share that, because, "Oh, that's improvement, like, we've gotten better." Like I said, we're very cautious to determine that allegations is a great number, but what is helpful is that we didn't see a massive increase. And actually, one of the things that, outside of our numbers that we keep, that so many of our middle school teachers talked about, was how the, the, the design of the building, the teeming in the wings, really kept the environments very intimate, and, and even though it was a large building with almost nine hundred students, it still felt small and intimate, like, you know, as a middle school should. So, I meant to mention that as well, thank you.
I think that's a good point. I know there were a lot of concerns when we were building the middle school-
Yeah.
-and combining them, that that would be an issue, and the fact that it has those wings, and it has that smell feeling to it-
Yeah.
-with the wings, I think that, that's helpful.
Yeah, it's made a difference.
Excellent. All right. Moving on, superintendent report.
Yes, as Mr. Padi mentioned, we're now officially, what, eleven school days away?
Wow.
Last day of school, just a reminder, it's an early release, right, for June thirteenth. As our art show wrapped up, I've selected the student artwork, and that'll be displayed in the superintendent's office. Thank you, Mrs. Breen, for going back two, three, four times with me to get them all, and Mrs. Breen will be notifying families whose children's artwork has been selected, and then we'll notify those families who have their artwork up in the office, so they can come and get them, and take the frames with them. I reiterate, it was really a pleasure to attend the National Honor Society for Wapo High School, and recognize our senior members and junior inductees. These students really exemplify our, our four pillars, scholarship, service, leadership, and character. The event also honored educators, coaches, mentors. As seniors, shared brief tributes recognizing individuals who made a lasting impact on their journey, so it was a wonderful night. The next two weeks, they're going to be extremely busy. I think there is something every afternoon slash evening between now and the, and the end of the year. Several concerts, next Monday, we have the incoming sixth-grade parent info night at the middle school. Please be reminded also that Wapo High School graduation is Sunday at one o'clock on the, on the football field. And also, best of luck to our spring sports teams. I think we've got boys and girls lacrosse, softball, baseball, and boys tennis, as they compete in postseason play, and I think they all have drew home, home games, so it'll, it'll be really busy starting Friday and through next week. I also just want to mention about chronic absenteeism. The percentage of students who are considered chronically absent, that's eighteen, the DESI, it's eighteen more days, is at four-point-three-five percent for the district, so if that remains there in the next, next two weeks, we'll have cut our chronic absenteeism rate in half compared to last year's data. So, I really want to give a shout-out and thank you to Mr. Connor for his hard work, and I'll actually be meeting with him next week to, just to review the year, and listen to his recommendations for next year, so that's, that's pretty incredible. And then I also wanted to end, just say, registration's now open for the annual Labor Day Road Race on September first, I think it's the fifty-second of the race, so that's it. Lots to do, check your calendars.
Fantastic. Excellent. Next order of business, for old business, we have capital budget, Mike Frith.
Okay, so enclosed in your packet are six items that are the school department's capital list or requests for FY25. These items are either technology-related or students-staff-safety-related items. They total approximately seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-five-hundred, and there are notes included next to each of them. We reviewed these at the last meeting, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on those items.
Nancy?
I apologize for not bringing this up sooner, Mike, but I'm wondering, should we have a request for items, I guess it would be equipment or, or, equipment in general for what we want to eventually accomplish at the Plimpton School? You know how we're, we're hoping to, on our own, without the current building project, get a, a technology center or a business center there? Should we have something listed on, on our capital budget request related to that, or would that not be for this year? Would that possibly be for the next cycle?
Yeah, the building, it's a good question. The building is occupied currently by our project management team, as well as the- The building is occupied currently by our project management team, as well as a construction company who's working out of the building.
Okay.
It's a limited amount of space that's available, and I know robotics is continuing to use it, their space is still available, but we're very limited to what we can do with the building. So I would recommend we consider that for next capital round. It's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you.
Excellent. Phil?
Through you, I apologize for missing the last discussion, but Mike, I want to thank you for ensuring that we're within the town's timelines for the preparation of this document, which is great. Could you just explain to me how this ties into, do we do five-year capital plans every year, or do we do it once every five years and sort of tweak the upcoming fiscal year?
So I would, yeah, I would add an additional year, the most current year, to the five-year plan, so it would basically push everything down one more year as we add a new one on. I do have the five-year plan, I just don't have it in the packet tonight, but I can provide that for you, but these are the current ones that we need to vote on. So most of those items from the five-year have been voted on in the past.
Could you just kind of maybe give us a ballpark of what other things, obviously Chromebooks, as we've talked about, ad nauseam, is an annual, is our largest capital request every year? What other things, I know we've looked at HVAC in the past, like what other large things are not big enough to be a building project, let's say, but not small enough to be eaten in the operating budget that are just sort of in this area, kind of coming down the pike at us?
It's a good question. So the, I think one of the larger areas that we have included on here on this list are the padding for our playgrounds. We currently use wood chips, you know, which are acceptable. It's within our code to protect students who may fall off of a structure, but the ideal padding is padding that would be under each of our play structures. Unfortunately, it's very expensive, and you can see a couple of items listed here. The Boyd and Playground in particular has a pad. Unfortunately, it's about 13 years old, so it needs to be replaced. They last 13 to 15 years and then need to be replaced. But you can see the Elm Feeny Playground, I reestimated that number to about $200,000, so it's a very expensive item. There's not a means within our operating budget to fund something of that sort. That is what I would consider a traditional capital item and definitely related to student safety. So that's another good example, and if you look down the five-year, you'll see those. We've made that request in the past, and we continue to make that request.
Good.
Yeah, just thinking about those paddings for the playground, am I right to assume that Fisher and Old Post would be like on the next year's list? They just didn't make it onto this year?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Mike. That was very helpful. Oh, yes, I forgot. We need to vote on this. Anybody have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the current list of capital requests for the school department.
Second. Excellent. Motion by Kristen, second by Adrian. Everybody? Perfect. Oh, me too. So 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, we have the middle school project update.
I think we're.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything new to report on time. Excellent. All right, moving right along. High school project update.
So the steel detailing is continuing and substantially complete pending final inspection. The masons continued with the backup wall, you've seen the wall, outside wall going up, and everything's being, you know, installed and inspected, and along with some of the electrical and roofing materials were also delivered, and we have a PBC meeting Tuesday.
Yes.
Six o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. And I will add, just for the community, there's a lot going on there, but just so you know, the timing-wise, there's a lot that's going to be going on in the summer. Consideration was given to, you know, how to manage disruption, and there will be a lot of activity over there, so.
Yeah, we started a science classrooms this summer.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Good stuff. Excellent. All right, moving along, subcommittee activities. Do we have any reports from anyone on subcommittees? Okay. Citizens' comments? Full house here tonight, any citizens? Okay, moving right along. We're on approval of warrants, donations, and minutes. Does someone have the warrants?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. Payroll under warrant number 2545PS. Accounts payable for schools' food service, special ed, WMS project, and student activity all under warrant number 225046. Payroll under 2547PS. And accounts payable for schools' food service, special ed, and student activities all under warrant number 225047, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Excellent. Motion by Adrian, second by Kristen. All in favor? 5-0-0. Donations? Who wants to take those?
I'll take those. I can make a motion to approve the following donations. To Boyd and from Bay State Textiles PAC for $206.62. To Old Post Road from American Heart Association NFL Play 60 for $1,000. To Elm Street from Box Tops, $20.60. To the middle school from Box Tops Bay State Textiles for $71.60. And to the high school from FM Global for $750.
Second.
Excellent. Motion by Kristen, second by Adrian. All in favor? 5-0-0. And minutes. Anyone want to take this?
Chair, I would make a motion to approve the May 15, 2025, school committee meeting minutes. I think, under school committee, they would should say Mrs. Rogers Simpson.
Oh, I didn't even see that. Correct. And just school committee members, Mrs. Rogers, Mrs. Simpson.
But with that.
It's a common mistake.
Especially because you submitted it at the bottom on the back.
All good. Thank you, Mr. Buckley.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? 5-0-0. And Mark is not here, so.
Simon?
Sure. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Kristen, second by Adrian. All those in favor? 5-0-0. And that's a wrap.